Hey, you're you're rolling.
All right, looks like we're ready to go this morning. We'd like to welcome everybody to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the twenty- All right, looks like we're ready to go this morning. We'd like to welcome everybody to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday- Groundhog Day, we'll do it again. All right, well, wel- welcome everybody to our county commission meeting this Monday, the twenty-second day of September two thousand twenty-five. Appreciate your attendance. We'll begin this meeting this morning with the word of prayer offered by Bruce Anderson, following which Terry Palmer will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, we humbly bow our heads today to give you thanks. Father, we're so thankful for the opportunity we have to live in this country. We're thankful for the love we share with one another and we're thankful for our communities. Father, we ask a blessing on this meeting that we'll be able to understand the will of the people, understand the the laws and rules that we are here to uphold and that we will be guided and directed by thy divine providence to help us make good choices. Father, we pray for those military members who were who are serving and ask that they'd be protected. Father, we love thee and we love thy son and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will go ahead and look at approving the minutes. John, what was the date on-
September eighth.
September eighth. Is there any question on those minutes?
No.
Question? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I tried and nothing came out when I opened my mouth. I'll move for approval of the minutes from our Iron County Commission meeting, nine eight of twenty-five.
Second that motion.
It's been moved to seconded. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we need to approve the the warrants, the claims for payment from September ninth, twenty twenty-five to September twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
The move to mo- to approve the claims for payment from September ninth, twenty twenty-five to September twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, we'll go to our departmental reports and start with our building and zoning planner, Terry Palmer. Thank you, Terry.
Good morning. Glad to be here. Start off with my report. I made mine highlighted so things stick out where we're gonna go. Uh, with the, starting with the building department, our permits year to date, um, twenty twenty-four, we had four hundred and sixteen issued. This year, uh, year to date, we have four hundred and six issued, so on regular permits, we're down about ten there. Commercial in twenty twenty-four, we issued twenty-five. In twenty twenty-five, we issued forty, so we're up fifteen there. Dwellings, we issued in twenty-four, nine, a hundred and nineteen. In twenty twenty-five, we issued a hundred and one. So our dwelling numbers are down just a little bit, but I think the commercial that we have have made up the difference on that. Inspections in twenty twenty-four, we did two thousand seven hundred and six. Twenty twenty-five, we had, did two hundred and fif- twenty-five hundred and sixty-four. Uh, I don't have the numbers on plan review from twenty twenty-four, but in twenty twenty-five, we've done approximately four hundred and fifty plan reviews so far this year. So our numbers for the building side is right in line where we have been the past few years. So things seem to be staying pretty consistent and all we're going is that we're still staying pretty good. We've got a lot still coming in, so as far as that, we're looking good. Crystal has picked up quickly on what needs to, needed to be done in the office after the wake of what happened. Uh, she's worked with the auditors and the state auditor on things to change to better improve, uh, tracking and and following things easier there to make it more efficiently. So she's picked up on the reports and the things that needs to be done. So Crystal's done a fabulous job there. We hired a new part-time administrative assistant, Ellie Navarro, that started the first of August. She's picking up quickly on things. She's going through our old permits to see where, if they were completed, if they're on the computer and what inspections have been done, so we clean out old files there. And then she's gonna start digitizing the old planning files so we can get those and track those easier. So that's our new part-time, uh, office administration there. So she's helped Crystal a lot, picking up, helping customers, answering phones and stuff, so she's starting to pick up quickly with things there. Trent spent last week in Las Vegas getting his third out of four certifications, so he's got three of the four residential certifications. And he will be getting his last residential one before the end of the year to get him fully certified as a combination resident- residential inspector. Nate is in Salt Lake this week, uh, in class, getting his last commercial certification. And then that will make him a completely certified combination inspector in residential and commercial. So that'll give us two on the commercial and all three of us on residential certified. Uh, I want to give a big thanks to all my office staff for stepping up through what's happened. Without them, I don't know where I would have, what I would have done. Each of them deserves special recognition for their work and efforts to make Iron County a better place and get the trust of the public back in the wake of things. So we've had, with the parade of homes that we've each went to and we had several comments of what's happened and want to know if we're getting things changed and trying to get the backing order. And we're reassured and they are. So my office staff, they have stepped up and done a lot to help with the wake of what's happened. So I appreciate them. They've done great to pick up the slack and and get things moving forward again. We hired a new zoning officer, code enforcement officer, to replace Trent when he moved into an inspector. Trent's worked with him the last couple of weeks. It's about Riley, it's Riley Westwood. He started on September second. Trent's worked with him a couple of weeks and he's picked up things quickly, working quite a bit with Sam, Reed and Brett to get questions answered. Uh, he's gonna take over and work, I think he's gonna work out great for the county to help try to get things straightened up, cleaned up around the county. So he's working out as our good, as a zoning. Uh, in the planning department, we hired Brett Hamilton and I think most of you have met him in different meetings already. He's working with Reed. Reed's give him some assignments to get things completed and worked out before the end of the year. We've got a couple of things that we've got to get in place to be in compliance with state regulation laws that they passed so that we're in compliance. So Brett's working on that, trying to get a couple of the ordinances in place. While Reed works at cleaning up and getting things tidied up as he finishes things out. As far as end date, we're not sure, but Reed said he will be done by the end of the year. Reed's been a great assess- asset and a lot of help to get things there, so we appreciate him. Maintenance, I don't even, I didn't even order right here, but maintenance been busy. They spent a lot of time at the fairgrounds replacing waterline sprinklers and getting parking lots redone, a couple of places around the clinic so that we had some more parking issue, parking places, spaces around that clinic and got that. And I've helped Brad clean up a lot and I think they've done a lot to help Jamie get the fairgrounds in order. They've done some painting in the attorney's office. They've kept the senior center, senior center and cedar going. They've had some concerns and complaints with water lines and sprinklers there that they've taken care of, some issues in the building that they've helped Stephanie with at the senior center there. They've just been working on a lot of different things. We're trying to get an RFP together for painting the visitor center. I don't know that we'll get that done this year, but hopefully we can get an RFP and get them started before the end of the year on painting there. That's what I've got.
They're gonna do a deck plate on the driveway at the senior center-
Okay.
Where they, the elderly come in with their walkers-
Walkers, okay.
It gets really icy right there, so we're just gonna bridge that with a piece of, um, galvanized dip-
Galvanized, okay, all right.
I told her to go ahead. She got a couple of bids and I told her to go ahead and get that going.
Get that done, okay. And then Thane and that may help. I don't know if they're gonna install it or if we need to, but-
I think they'll just, I think C D welding's gonna do the job and they'll just install it, so.
Okay, good. Uh, anything else? Like I says, we're staying way busy, uh, lots of things still going on. Everything from all indications, talking to the public, things are still looking good as far as construction and stuff. We're trying to keep ahead of that maintenance. I don't want to bring it up, but I need to. I, uh, Friday, we found out that there's more stuff that's gonna be required for this elevator. I, uh, come unglued in my office Friday morning. I haven't called Otis because I had to count to ten over the weekend. They did not tell us upfront some of the things that needed to be done. So Thane was working with the electrician and Otis to find out, so I don't know dollar amount where we're at just yet. So half of it's been paid. The parts are ordered. They're supposed to be coming in by the end of the sep- end of this month, so this next week or the first week in October to set a schedule up to get it started, to get it modernized.
Oh, about it beforehand?
What's that?
Do they know about the problems beforehand or did they just find out midstream or?
I think it was more midstream. We come back and says, oh, we might have to look at something else. So I don't know. I'm not getting the whole story from Otis yet. But they sent Thane an email that says we will meet with you last Wednesday or Thursday. They gave him an outline of things that needed to be done now. I know, I'm with you, Paul. It goes back to when we remodeled this building. I'm with you totally on that one. So I am not commenting on that one.
John and I have no comment.
So, so it might be a little bit more, but I know we've paid half of it right now to get it to parts here. Uh, I wish I could say we could just totally disable it, but we can't unfortunately. And take it out of use, but we can't, so we need it and we've got to get it taken care of now, so. But that's probably gonna be my biggest issue before the end of the year on budget. Everything else, numbers are looking good. I think we're good on everything else except that elevator.
They think? I mean, is it, is it, is it worth fixing or do we get a new one?
Well, it's worth fixing. By the time we're done, it's gonna be this close to new.
New, okay.
So, yeah, I think, I think we're gonna have a good life out of it after we get everything done that they're telling us because right now it's things that need to be done after they tell us what it was. It's just they should have told us upfront so we could have worked it in the budget with everything else going on, so. But I think we'll be fine once we get everything done, so. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I'll find a total hard number as to what we've gotta look for right now. We have put a couple of the things off on projects to try to get as much as we can to put towards that, to still keep things going, see what we can do. So, sorry.
We can probably get a loan from Paiute County to help us out.
I like that. They have extra. Okay, anything else I need to worry about and look at? That's my departments.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. I spent a lot of time talking with Terry lately. He's, man, I appreciate you guys.
It's, it's been still a long, long three months, but I still have hair. I'm still upright. Don't ask my wife anything else. But we're good. I appreciate your support and all that we've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, let's go to engineering. Rich?
Bruce wanted to know if Paiute County had an elevator they could give us.
Do you even have an elevator in Paiute County?
It's like you gotta start with a street light before you can get an elevator.
To, to get a two-story building somewhere. Anyway, so the engineering departments, we just, uh, we're really happy that the monsoon season's winding down without any major events. We've had a couple of minor things, but over the course of the spring and summer and this fall, we've continued to, to monitor the flood, uh, capacities and abilities of our, our floodways.
We did, we did good. That one storm was a doozy and we did good. I was expecting some really bad damage and we-
Well, that's, that's because we, we're prepared. We've got a lot of, of channels cleaned. We've got some more to clean. I, uh, I spoke with Amber about, uh, vegetation man- management. She has the goats and, um, I talked with, uh, Luke and asked if we could, if the engineering department under flood control could buy collars. And that seems like a really good, uh, sharing with the weed department is the engineering department for flood control purposes will buy collars. One of the benefits of, of what Amber's proposing is, uh, the, the goats will, will chew up the, the weeds and stuff. And typically what we have to do, go back to a borrow ditch, is it's filled in with weeds. It's filled back up with weeds and and the goats will take those completely out without leaving a big, uh, repository behind them. And I, I don't, that's not meant as a pun. But, yeah, if we mow or do anything with weeds, we leave them in the borrow ditch and, and we just have the buildup and we won't have that. So I look forward to seeing how we can work out, especially with, uh, borrow ditches are difficult to, to get to with a mower or something else. So I feel really good that the, uh, we've, uh, been able to stay on top of, uh, the minor rainstorms that we did get and, uh, and that we could carry the capacity. We've purchased a property, as you know, Commissioner Cousins, for a retention pond. That is proceeding. I have a contract with Sunrock to, to dig that. Yes, John?
Um, I just have to apologize to Commissioner Cousins. That was the form that, uh, we looked at this morning, uh, the-
We needed to sign.
For David, yeah.
Yes, yes.
And that one, that one's taken care of. We'll get it.
That was a new law that just came out.
Recorded, yeah.
Yeah, so we can get that recorded, so.
Work with Mary Lee to streamline that because you're gonna have more than one of those.
We've got several. We've got another one in the works for a purchase of a property. And that's where I was going to next. We're, we, we've got a lot of, uh, opportunity to purchase, uh, a corridor right away. Uh, and several people and we, I'm waiting for, uh, a couple of, uh, I, uh, we hired, uh, uh, Morley McConkey out of Saint George for some commercial property appraisal so that we can make an offer on two properties for the Belt Route down in the industrial area on fifty-six and Iron Springs Road. Um, we've have, had owners approach us, as I've said before, and we're hoping to wind down to that. The, uh, and so we will need that streamlined so that we have the proper signature so that we don't find ourselves not owning a property because of some technicality. And yet we've paid for it. So, back to the, uh, pond that we just, uh, the land we purchased for the retention pond. I've been working with the de- uh, designer of the two properties that are right by that so that we can have a relief on that channel. I've asked for a twenty-five foot right away to, to cross Mid Valley Road and pick up water from that subdivision, which is, uh, Peak View as well as out of the Webster Ditch. We're looking right now at putting a thirty-six inch culvert across Mid Valley Road at that location, which will cut, which will, uh, prevent the backing up of water into twenty-five seventy-five, which is that first entrance is in, into, into, uh, Peak View subdivision. It backs up because its outlet is below the water flow line in the Webster Ditch. And so we will take that down and with a thirty-six inch culvert and, uh, cross there and, and then that'll be headed toward our new, uh, retention pond, which is now oversized by almost, uh, thirty-five percent. And, uh, and yet on that one, I'm talking to, uh, the planner of those two properties, which are both coming under subdivision uh, rules, to, uh, have a relief that says we can divert water uh, to the west and then over, or my eventual goal is to take it to twenty-seven hundred, take it around twenty-seven hundred west, uh, just north of forty-eight hundred and then to Lund Highway. So that we can stop having these dead end locations. As you know, we, we had a RFP out and, and Terry didn't mention this, but for the, uh, capital improvement projects, which will, which we will present to you, uh, uh, before we bring it to this council. We received, uh, bids on that for an RFP for capital improvements, which will lead to an ability to have a, um, impact fee study, which the, the beauty of what they, they did was they actually incorporated both. They're going to do an imp- uh, a capital improvement uh, projection along with an impact fee study. And so it's a two for one. We're paying a little bit more for the capital improvement plan, but it will include, uh, impact fees as, as well as what, what was the term? It was, uh, utility fees, which will allow us to, uh, do these projects that, that everyone benefits from, such as the Belt Route, uh, transportation or a, a improved, uh, uh, stormwater system, which will benefit everyone because some, sometimes people don't realize that, that the flooding that is happening downstream is a result of what they've done upstream. We've caused, uh, you know, we've just pushed it down, downstream. Whether that's because of more, uh, hard surfaces or streets or housing. In fact, as I've, I've even compliment, uh, contemplating our, our current detention pond or retention pond sizing, I've realized that with, uh, zero scape or with lawns, there's not an absorption there. We only look at the hard surface, the roof and the road. But if you look at the amount of water that a lawn will actually absorb before it begins to sheet flow off, it's not much. That's why all those sprinkler systems sprinkle in the morning and then the sidewalks are wet. Because they've taken all the water they can. Well, you can imagine in a downpour, they get more water they can handle in a minute. Well, the same is true as zero scape. All zero scape is usually underlaid with a fabric to keep the weeds out. Once it hits the fabric, it's just a, a sheet. And so I think that's a, that's probably a reason we're undersizing some of those is because we're not, we're, we're giving credit for green space or zero scape. That is probably oversized credit. So there, there's a lot going on in the engineering department along with, uh, uh, roads and working with, uh, Bruce on these culverts that we did at three thousand. It's, it's great to have a, a relationship with the other departments that, uh, allows us to offer some assistance and them to offer a lot of assistance. I've, I've got a couple of guys. They've got a, a few more and, uh, and so I appreciate all that they ever do. Is there any questions, Commissioner?
I don't think so. I ran out during that big storm and seemed like everything was good out by holidays.
It was, yeah. If, if we'd had the weeds managed just, uh, to the west of the, uh, transformer, it would have even been better. But we had mowed that. We had mowed that in July. And it looks like we hadn't touched it, so.
Probably crazy, doesn't it?
It is. It's the one thing in Iron County, I hate to say this and it's not disparaging, that'll grow without invitation or weeds. Even if we get no water, they will grow, so. Commissioner Bleak, did you have, have anything?
No, I was just gonna say thank you.
All right.
I, I got a call Saturday from Wade.
I did too.
He said he got ahold of you. What was the, uh, one of us was in a bad service area, so I wasn't getting-
He was in a bad service area. And he called me and I called Bruce and we, so, and I'm gonna follow up with that. We have a company who's putting in a fiber optics line up on right hand. And Wade was up there and, and he, uh, he noticed that they didn't have, uh, good traffic control. And so we're dealing with that. We're gonna see what, what's going on. Why, why don't they have, uh, you know, if they're gonna be operating in the roadway, people shouldn't, uh, be felt that they're, and that's what Wade was telling me. He says, you know, I almost had a backhoe back into me, wasn't paying attention. So we're gonna deal with that this morning.
So what percent of completion are they on that project or they?
I, I do not know. They, it was a big project, a long, long. I, I forget how many, uh, thousands of feet that they were running. And so they're still running it and, uh, there was a s- and, and to answer some of the other things, it wasn't. So again, this cooperation with the road department and other departments like the building department and, and park, uh, park and recs is great. We did, uh, we found two places on right hand where we did not want them to, we want them to bore. They're on those tight, tight corners on the paved portion going up the hill where there's a cliff face right there. We want them to bore. They're on those tight tight corners on the paved portion going up the hill where there's a cliff face right there. It will not be a good idea to disturb that area. That would be if we disturb it by trenching, we could have a a slough off. Yeah. And so I've already talked to them. That was a month ago. I haven't heard, but they but my request was that they would bore those areas so they weren't disturbing. You you saw they were bored?
I took my wife a ride and they had the boring.
Okay, well, see, we we all drive different roads at different times. I haven't driven up right hand. I've driven a lot of other places and seen a lot of other things. So we 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 appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works. Rich says stuff and then my mind goes in bad places sometimes. You can tell where he drives because the beer cans are out still. He doesn't leave them in his truck.
He's not easy.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you, Commissioners. Let's start with the road department.
He's just delayed. Just a little delay there.
Yeah. Don't tell him jokes on Sunday. He's laughing at church all week.
Hey, at least Bruce shares.
Road Department. We resurfaced about eighty miles of eighty lane miles of road this year. We really got a lot done. That's not including what we skim patched. I don't have that data yet. We're still skim patching just a little bit. But we got a lot done in in road surfacing. Typically, that'd be around fifty to sixty miles. So kudos to Justin and his crew for doing that. We're working on the engineering for Gold Springs Road. Platts are gonna get us. We had to change a couple of things at our last BLM meeting. The road needs to touch the private property or go to there so there's not a right away issue going into the private property that we're trying to go around. I think as of probably Thursday, we can start working on the Kevin Woods Road. I haven't heard. I met with them guys. And I think that the ruling's coming on Thursday. Is that right?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So and we have been working with Holtz on that road. We're gonna use their pit, their water. It's been it's been a really good situation there for us. We're working on the Summit Road down to Ellen Gardner's. It'd go from Summit Center Street goes down along the freeway and down there. And then eventually that would connect, probably not this next year, but another following. We'll have it paved all the way to the Gap Road. I'm just working on the budgets for twenty twenty six right now. Right today, they're doing a little bit of skim patching, blading on the mountain, cattle guard cleaning, culvert cleaning. And then we're just finishing up some fall patching until it gets too cold to run us off. We're trying to get as much skim patching as we can. And then we've we've started striping. We got the Gap Road stripe this year. All the from the new the new rules, anything over thirty five miles an hour is gonna have to be striped by twenty twenty six. So all our striping's done. We got Iron Springs, Burl Highway, the Gap. I think the only one that's not on there right now is the west frontage on the Buckhorn and then four thousand north and twenty eight hundred north or twenty eight hundred west, twenty eight hundred west and four thousand. Both of them are north and forty one hundred west. So any questions on oh, and then on the back part of that, I gave you a list of the roads that we that we resurfaced, five hundred north, all those. Some of them, the second part where it says double chip, those were all dirt roads. So we had to do them twice, the dirt roads. We chip seal, sweep it off, come back the next day and do it again so that we have an inch of cover. But so.
So if it's dirt, if it's a dirt road, you'd just double chip it?
We have to double chip it, yeah.
Rather than having if you don't have a road base underneath it?
Yeah, we have road base. We build it all up just like you would an asphalt and then double chip it.
I see.
Double chip it. Any questions on road department?
Um, I I just have one thing to kind of get in your mind. On the on the driveway to the courthouse, like the in and out to the on one hundred south, the one over by the youth home where that new modular is. Anyway, it would be great next time you guys are over here to kind of address there's the space between where the sidewalk is and the city's asphalt. I mean, if you're in a truck, I think it's not a big deal, but for the most part, cars need to drive on just the one side because the other side's not. It's just I think it's just I don't even know what's happened over the years, but if you guys could somehow.
Probably the guys from the clerk have been peeling out on it. That's over the last.
Well, you know, we get those county cars and they're so fast. We're hopped up on all the cigarettes that we borrowed from Bruce.
Probably won't happen till the next spring, but.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to get that on your radar. But yeah, if you could look at that at some point and maybe next time you're over here. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to landfill. We're doing water samples, our far water samples. Jeremy and I'll do them on Wednesday. The DEQ is doing a recycle survey. It's about halfway done. They've asked us to everybody that comes through. I don't know if you guys have been to the landfill, but our our scale house people should be handing you a card asking you to fill out a a recycle survey. Our front end cans that we changed to have been at first it was talking whenever you change something new, there's always the people that complain. But for the most part, we've had really positive success with that. They're cleaner, they're nicer. There are there the complaints that we had was they're too high. They're three inches higher than the other ones. But we're we get with one truck in two days what we used to do with two trucks in four days. So it's a way better idea. And we're probably gonna expand that effort. Hopefully in twenty twenty six, get rid of a few more of the other ones and buy some more cans. Got to we had a new employee start last Tuesday. And then we got two more starting a week from today. And so hopefully they'll pick up quick. On this on this this page, three, four or two, three and four here that there's just that's our seventy one thousand, six hundred and thirty tons for this year to this date. That's up just a hair. Parwan's at twenty five hundred forty five. That's down. Parwan's down a little bit. But we haven't had any big tear downs or we were up quite a bit when they tore down the the building to put in the new city offices. And so Parwan's Parwan's down, but all them other them numbers there you can just go through. If you have any questions, ask me. Our equipment's in good shape. The the one issue that we have that that really needs addressed somehow and and I I've got meetings with the state again, but fires are fires are really becoming an issue. We're having anywhere from one to two, sometimes three week. And ninety nine percent of them are from lithium ion batteries. Once they hit that thermal runaway, they just they'll start a fire. And so it's it's getting to the point where obviously when I when I took over in two thousand twelve, we were doing for the whole entire year, we'd do forty thousand tons of trash. You can see on there we're at seventy two thousand right now. And we still just have one guy in the pit. We're gonna have to get we're gonna have to have multiple people there because of the the amount of traffic. And then if you have a fire, we're gonna have there the the fire and it it's it's everywhere. It's not just us. There there we gotta maybe. I don't know. I I did talk to Chris, remember Stuart? Was that his last name, his guy? And then I actually called other landfills and their guy sent him letters too. So I know that he got at least five, five letters from landfills. But this lithium ion battery deal is big. It's a big deal. And it's not as bad for us as it is some if you're lined and you have a deep fire, man, it's gonna be millions to repair.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. And so.
Because it'll burn your liner up?
Yeah. And all the so they have infrastructure that runs the the water out of them and the natural gas. And it burns all that up. It's a it's becoming quite a problem. The other problem we have, they're they're not bad if you're there working and get it done. But if it starts while nobody's there, then you've been there. You know what it's like. It's it's a pretty big deal. And then just the the toxic stuff that comes off. I'm working with George right now. He's trying to find us some filtration systems for the guys, but the PPNE is what we're we we gotta up that up a little bit. And then we'll probably have to figure out of some kind of suppression system in the pit itself, whether that is a water pole or some way to get water there a little bit faster. You know, have a have a water pole there or bigger trucks. I'm not sure exactly how that's.
Are they easily extinguished with water, the the battery fires or?
No, you have to process them, but you have to get to where you can drive on it first. Is what we do is we try to get it out somewhat and then push it with a a dozer and trackos down on the floor. Mix it up and then we set it aside. The the director of the DEQ came down and met with me in March. I guess, yeah, it was in March. And he's gonna start a committee that we talked about this and and because there's really not a best practices of what you do. And so you have to leave it uncovered and untouched for a while to see if it's gonna reignite. And so there's a there's six or eight of us throughout the state that are gonna come up with that and and get it on there because when you have a fire and then you leave it uncovered, you're really in violation and but you can't cover it or you're just in the same thing the very next day. So we're working on some things with the state with other landfills. But yeah, there's gonna have to be some some budget looks for PPNE and some different water suppression systems. But you gotta get water on it and then mix it up. If you just spray water on it, it'll an hour later, it'll be gone. You have to get water on it, put it down and then remove it. So.
What if you put a big tank on that west side up high?
Yeah.
You know, and have a big hose coming down the cliff and so you access that. Would that work?
Yeah, yeah, even on the even on the north side or so, you know, you're right in there that we you know, you've seen them water poles on construction sites you move around. If you had something like that, the problem is where where's our water gonna come from? So that's the it's a long ways to actual water from there.
Water up to it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Head back to work. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Let's see. Let's go to Commissions. Commissioner Blake, you wanna go next? Sure. Get my glasses out so I can read my notes. So I've been asked to serve on a a committee with Intermountain and Cedar City Hospital to look at mental health issues in the area. We met as a committee on the ninth and went down to to the receiving center in Hurricane to check out their operation and and kind of get some ideas of of what a resource that is. That was that was really good. Those guys do a great job down there. It's kind of out of the way. I think there's a little bit of a struggle because there it's not really easily accessible. And it's tough to, you know, it's open to for resources in Iron County, but it's really tough. You know, we've met as law enforcement to try and figure out to how to address issues. So if if an officer in Parwan has to respond, that leaves Parwan uncovered. It's at least a two night at least a two hour round trip. So we're kind of working together with Sheriff's Office, with Cedar City Police Department to kind of, I mean, see if there's that we can do better in utilizing that center. We met as the Southern Utah Economic Development Executive Committee. If you remember, that's the the organization that we opted to help fund last year. That's it's a regional economic development. It's actually a a five oh one C four that looks at developing the entirety of the region of Southern Utah. That's they're doing really well. I don't I don't have anything specific to report there yet. It's still kind of in the organization phase, but that's gonna be and that's gonna be a real benefit. Airport board meeting, we continue to work towards putting together the information that we need to try and get a a controlled tower. We're the second busiest airport in the state and have no air traffic control. That's it's getting more and more dicey. That's kind of the one of the one of the focuses of that board. The CJC golf tournament was this past week. I was broken, so I didn't get to play, but they did have me come and lead everybody in the pledge and got some donuts. Commissioner Robinson was there swinging a swinging a club. That's always want to thank Cyrus. It used to be Cyrus at the pub, but Cyrus sold the pub and he's but Cyrus just does a lot, especially for the the Children's Justice Center and organizing some of these events. I was approached by a a group of employees at the airport with some just some maintenance complaints. And these were really stupid little things. But they never told anybody. And so Scott Phillips and I went out there and met with Tyler, our airport director. And it just these little ticky things like water backing up into the luggage area. This I mean, just little things that it's really helpful when people actually come forward and say, hey, this is a problem. And then, you know, hopefully we can get it get that addressed. But that was just I thought that was cool of these people to it was just kind of a chance meeting on the street. They're like, you don't have anything to do at the airport. You're a county guy. And I was, well, actually, I sit on the airport board. They're like, oh, here's a list. And then Scott and I literally that afternoon got with Tyler and they're like, oh, yeah, no, this is fairly easy to fix. Just we didn't know about it. So kudos to those folks for 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 speaking up. We had our America two fifty committee meeting. We don't have anything pending that the county has to worry about at the moment. I had a meeting with Jameson Robinette. If you remember, he's the new CEO of Cedar City Hospital. We just sat down kind of a a relationship building meeting to talk about relationship between Intermountain and the county and what we can do to to help each other moving forward. So that's I I'm really appreciative of of him as the new CEO. I think that it's you know, when we do have issues, we we didn't really talk about anything specific. But I think that relationship's healthy and it's gonna be good. Saturday night, I had an opportunity to attend a memorial service for Charlie Kirk here in Parwan at the Mountain View Ranch. It was short and sweet and super. I guess really moving, really appropriate. Grant Cox at Mountain View Ranch put that program together. And I actually, after I asked him if he'd come today at ten for a public comments and just kind of talk about the same thing he did the other night. It was it was super appropriate. Just very about humanity and about how we treat each other. He's agreed begrudgingly to attend this morning, but he says he's not a public speaker, but I encouraged him to come and and give public comment at ten. Just one other thing that I I'd like to propose, and it's not anything to I mean, this is just a this is just something to talk about moving forward. So I finished my evaluations this week. And I hate evaluations. Like, and I'm terrible at them. But I've been looking into and I had this conversation with the sheriff with George at a at another meeting that we were in talking about just how, you know, when we have employee problems, everybody, everybody always gets a four or a five. And then when it comes back to trying to to discipline or have any problems, it just never we 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 have a hard time having any teeth. I started looking. So the 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 United States government has a a five star rating program, just like everybody else. I can't remember how many employees they have, a couple million employees. Eighty seven percent of their employees get a four or a five. Only less than. Only less than two percent get a one or a two.
Rose colored glasses, huh?
So I, I've just, I've got some ideas on how to kinda restructure our evaluation process. I've talked to Jennifer about it and she's like, we can manipulate our current software. But anyway, I've just got some ideas how to maybe get rid of that traditional way of doing evaluations and have a, have a more meaningful and a more sincere evaluation. Anyway, that's, that's just something that came up. I thought that statistic was really interesting. So they're saying, you know, talking about cleaning up the federal government, we need to get, you know, move the problem employees. And they're like, well, here's the problem. Eighty-seven percent have five star, four or five stars. And so when it comes back to, to being able to, to discipline, uh, it's really tough because all their evaluations are glowing. So, and not that we have necessarily problem employees here, but I know that, you know, when I talk to, to folks that I work with in the county, a more meaningful evaluation is something that they've also, that they would appreciate. Anyway, that, just a, just food for thought. That's what I got.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Um, we had the fall coordination meeting with the BLM, uh, with the Sidla Group, BLM, Division of Wildlife, Weed Control. Everybody had good reports that, and in that meeting, it, it was very productive and just a good meeting to hear how everybody's summers had gone and, and where we were going forward. And to see the coordination between the BLM and, and other agencies and their willingness to work with them and, and move things forward was really, really good. Uh, fire mitigation and reseeding and those kinds of things. So that, that was, that was a very productive meeting. Um, had the meeting, the continual meeting at the sheriff's complex. Um, they were gonna begin boring the rel on Friday. Have you heard how that went?
Went good. Went perfect. So they're done.
So I was.
Put the casing, yeah, and they didn't have any settlement. The train went over on Sunday. They were good.
Heard things.
So though, no movement on the tracks?
Oh, they put some flowable fill around it and it's good. We're golden.
That's been a worry for a long time.
Well, at one point I asked, which I, we thought would happen first, the second coming or getting that board and.
They finally got the train bored through, so that's good. Um, Maria invited me into her office for a discussion to educate me on her responsibilities and the process that she goes through and, and how she does her job. And so that was very, very productive. And we talked about the future plans for the twenty-five year plan for the fairgrounds. Went through that and, and her level of, of help and commitment that she could provide on that. So that, that was very, that was very good and time well spent with her. Um, and then I had a conversation with Jamie at the fairgrounds and involved Maria in that also. Um, one of the things that will push the fair and the rodeo forward is if we had jumbotrons at the, at the arena to, to facilitate that being, um, broadcast on the Cowboy Channel, which is a huge deal in the, in the rodeo world. It's, it's followed by lots and lots of people and it, it provides the notoriety and the public interest for our fair and our rodeo. And so Maria's gonna, and Marie and Jamie are going to work on getting that put together. Um, they figured it'd be about Jamie got bids, I think for around $10,000 to, to do that. And that would facilitate the Cowboy Channel. And the stock contractor was pushing that and that will help out with the participants that we get coming in and the money that that brings also. So we're moving forward on that. Um, had the CJC Golf Tournament, very well, very well attended. Great opportunity to, to hang out with the law enforcement in the county and, and participate with them. Um, unfortunately I had to leave that tournament after five holes because of the chaos that was created. Uh, in my personal situation with the re- revealing of the name of the assassin. Unfortunately, my youngest son's named Tyler Robinson. And so that absolutely turned our world upside down for about thirty-six hours. It was a nightmare, uh, through social media, um, and, and things that were involved there, but absolutely nothing compared to the family that, that is the actual parents of Tyler Robinson. So, um, also attended the, the very, very end of the SUU Memorial for Charlie Kirk. Um, there was six hundred candles handed out and they ran out. It was a, it was very, very well attended, um, and a, a great opportunity for people to get together and just memorialize him, um, in a positive way, right? And that, that, um, through this whole process, I think Governor Cox has done a very good job of pointing out that there's a better way. There, there's a better way to react and, and Utah did that well. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I was out of town and couldn't make that, uh, candlelight vigil, but it was appreciated that they organized that. I, I watched the funeral yesterday. It was very moving and touching that, uh, probably the most touching part was his wife who forgave the killer of her husband. That was pretty, pretty remarkable. And, um, just a, just a tragedy. That young man had so much potential and did so much good that, uh, that it started a, a movement that's not gonna stop. Um, this week I attended the state water plan meeting at the DNR. They, there's a representative that's coming around, uh, and, and having these small meetings with the locals and talking about, um, conservation and other issues with water. And it's, it's, uh, it was, it was a good meeting. We had a good turnout and, uh, good roundtable discussion. Uh, I attended the planning commission meeting. We appreciate our planning commission and all they do and they do a great job. And Terry, you're involved in that and appreciate you and on that, on that, uh, in that arena. Uh, I talked to Ron Larson again this week about, um, the building for Amber. Uh, he, he still hasn't heard back from some metal fabricators that he's talked to. He thought we, he might just drop a plan for a wood frame, um, structure and do a shed roof with some TJIs. And anyway, he's gonna get back to us on the plan. On that, I just said, we need to get that going. Um, so I worked on that. Um, lastly, I wanted to just, uh, pay my condolences, our condolences to the Black family. John Black passed away this last week and went to his, um, viewing and visit with Sonia, his sweetheart. And, uh, he just went through a, a really hard time with, with Parkinson's and finally took his life. But, uh, I had an opportunity to serve with him on the city council. And what a great individual he was and, and did and, and served. Was, he was a great public servant and wanted to, wanted to express our condolences for that family. And, um, that's all I have today. Uh, we will take about a ten minute break. We'll resume this meeting about ten after ten. Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're ready to go. We appreciate everybody's attendance today to our second part of our meeting. We will begin with the item number one, which will be a public hearing and possible approval of sale of real property. APN number E dash thirteen eighty-seven dash twelve, number one eight seven three nine zero. And this could be part of a closed session, but it's probably not warranted based on what our clerks telling me, so. And John, if you'll explain what we're gonna do here.
So this has been in the works for a while. Eldon Harker is here. And he expressed interest in this parcel a while back. This parcel is a used up gravel pit that the county has used. Visited with our public work director, Bruce Anderson, and he said there's no real value left in it. It's it's used up. They have been buying, they purchased the runway portion of it. This is just right here by Burrowtown. Not the rural town site, but the rural junction. And then the part in blue is Sitla, and they've just finished buying that. So this actually gives them, this will round off all their piece. They own everything around this piece. It was a good gravel pit. I guess UDOT used it and we used it, but it's it's now used up. So what we did is we hired Bushnell, and he did a, he did an appraisal for it. The appraisal came back at eighteen thousand. Oh seventeen thousand. Yeah, Jason Bushnell was the appraiser. It came back at seventeen thousand. And he kind of went through all of that, but but basically that's kind of a minimal value for the for the property. We have made notice for two weeks as required. It does require a public hearing. You can, if you want to, you know, whenever we dispose of real property, you can certainly go into a closed section session under fifty-four two, two oh five D. I don't know that you would need to this time because we have an appraised value, no other interested parties. And Eldon is willing to pay the appraised amount. So the only thing we're really out is the cost of the appraisal.
All right. Well, chair will declare this public hearing open for this agenda item. If there's anybody that'd like to speak to it. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and is there any discussion on this item?
No.
I'll entertain the motion.
All right, I would move. I would move to approve the sale of real property APN E thirteen eighty-seven dash twelve, number one eight seven three nine zero for the amount of seventeen thousand dollars.
Second that motion.
Been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
And then Eldon, if you want to just reach out to me later today and we'll we'll make those arrangements. We'll get that taken care of. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to item number two, which is a public comment section. If there's anybody that'd like to make a public comment, you're welcome to. We have a three minute time limit and should not repeat of the comments, only for nod. So go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Get all this noise out of here. Can I get somebody to hold a couple of these?
I'll come down and be your, do you want, we can just, do you want me just to kind of put them up here?
We can just hold them up. So that everybody knows what we're talking about. Anybody else?
My name is Grant Cox. I live in Parlewin, Utah, ten south, six hundred west. At what's commonly called Mountain View Ranch. On September tenth, we had a tragedy in America. A man was assassinated for his religion, for his beliefs, and for his outspoken thoughts by whomever. I, I don't know and don't want to get into that. He's not worth my time to even discuss him. What's even worse is this tragedy happened in the state of Utah, the great state of Utah. The land of religion. The land that we love. We allowed this to happen. And I waited for a week for someone within Parlewin or the county in this area to do something to honor Charlie Kirk. The only thing that transpired is they did have a, I understand, a huge gathering at SUU, which is great. I felt a need that that we in our government bodies should be made aware of this. Because it smacks in a problem that we have in America. We don't talk about religion anymore in politics. And we don't talk about that piece of cloth right over there. That's an American flag. And that is very sacred in the state of Utah and in the United States. And for that, we murdered a man, allowed it to happen, and I say we, we Americans have allowed this to happen. It needs to stop. And people need to stand up and take notice. Because we lost a great patriot, notwithstanding the traumatic impact that it's caused on his beautiful wife Erica and their two children. The positive thing about that is I think the old cliche of behind every man is a great, strong woman. And in watching Erica after this tragedy, she may be stronger than Charlie. Watch out radicals. One of the things that they've done is they woke me up, and that's why I'm here today. I put on a memorial for Charlie Kirk at the Mountain View Ranch Museum on the twentieth, Saturday. And I put out sixty-seven chairs, and I didn't count how many were full. Those that were there said that the museum was pretty well full. Michael Bleak came to the to the memorial and asked me to come to the county commission and and speak a few words. And I don't want to get into a big, long thing because somebody's waiting to cut me off at three minutes. I know they are.
We told, he's keeping, he's keeping the clock off.
And so, and I don't want to take on anybody else's. I'm not a politician. I'm not a guy looking for a public elected position, and I'm not a guy looking for, for recognition. Lord knows, if you know me and Mountain View Ranch around the city of Parlewin, I'm very well known. Because I'm, I speak American. I don't speak politics. I'm pretty blunt. And the Parlewin City Administration is kind of been the subject of my comments here the last little while, and it's, some of it's been really well, and some of it's gone with threats against me. And I don't appreciate that. I think it's terrible. I think it's terrible when we allow these kind of travesties to happen in America. And I think it's an absolute travesty when we allow this piece of cloth here, who, what we cherish, we salute, and we carry it, and we dispose of it in a very, very specific, certain manner. But we don't honor it. We allow these things to happen. I'm gonna end with Americans, people of Iron County, people of Parlewin, America, wake up. Stop sitting around and being complacent. Stand up, take up the fight, and I, I don't know what this turning point, I, I, people are talking about charters and all that. I don't belong to any of it. I belong to Charlie Kirk and Erica Kirk and his family. I support them. And that's my message to all the citizens here is stand up, wake up and be counted because our country has been taken over. What, the, the one thing I do want, and I'm sorry I'm gonna take over three minutes. If you watched the memorial yesterday, how many presidents have you seen attend a private memorial? Not only the president was there, but the vice president and his whole cabinet. And if you listen to each one of them speak, ninety percent of their speech was about God, was about religion, and was about taking America back. How many years has it been since we've seen the president of the United States and his whole cabinet and elected officials spend however many hours it was talking about God? People, put that word back in your life again. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks for your help there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any others? Seeing none, we'll pull, close the public comments and move to item number three. Presentation about a poverty reduction program offered by Five County entitled Circles. And this is presented by Catherine Moster, Moster, Moster.
It's a hard one. I know people always struggle with it. I married into it. I mean, it's not my, my, my maiden name isn't much better, Chioder, so. I don't know. At least I moved up in the alphabet. So yeah, so my name is Catherine Moster. I work with Five County with the Community Action Partnership. And the program I'm over is called Circles. We have a cohort that is meeting currently in St. George, and we're looking to open one in Iron County in Cedar City. So Circles is a nationwide initiative. It's been around for twenty-five years. And it's focused on helping families and individuals get out of poverty and become more self-reliant. What we see is that right now, our twenty twenty-five federal poverty guidelines are listed by family households. So the size of your household and your income. So the federal poverty guideline is like at a hundred percent. Oftentimes, when people come to our, our Five Counties Association, our qualifications will, will be that you'll have to be at a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty guideline. Because as you look here, if you look for just one person, the guideline says that if you're at fifteen thousand, you're living in poverty. Which obviously, if you're trying to live off fifteen thousand dollars a year, I don't even know if anybody can rent a house for fifteen thousand dollars a year. So trying to afford everything else, we see that that's a problem. So what our group tries to do, and these are our outcomes that we have with the grant we have, but we try to bring people up to two hundred percent of that poverty guideline, so double that. So thirty thousand, one person could live off of that, right? So these are some statistics for Iron County. I'm gonna, this is just an infographic. I'm gonna pass that to you guys. You can take a look at that a little closer. So this is just so you know what's, what, what it looks like in Iron County. So we'll look at that poverty level and looking at some of the data. In Iron County, thirty-eight In Iron County, 38.6 of the residents live below that 200%. So that federal poverty is 100, so 200%. So that's almost four out of every 10 of our families or individuals are struggling to make those end meet because they're in that, that gray area. Average monthly wage is $3,651. Well, for the state, it's 5,242. And then if you look at like a living wage, MIT has created this calculator and it looks at your zip code and what you would need to have for the conditions in your community. So our current minimum wage within the nation is 725 per hour. I don't know many places that that's what that, they're actually paying. Poverty wage is $12.18 an hour. And then a living wage for one person, so like you'll have a head of household, a spouse and two children. For them to make a living wage, it would be $47.16 an hour. So not many people are making that. Some are, obviously. Six out of that 10 are. Housing, Utah is expensive. It's the ninth most expensive in the country. These are some of our main employers, the university, the school district and Intermountain. Those are the three biggest. And then childcare costs. So if you do have both parents working to help stretch that, you're looking at them paying almost a third of their paycheck to childcare costs for two children. So that's kind of what's going on. And this is why we think this program's going to be great. So what we see at Five Counties is we help with deposit assistance. We help with rental assistance and things like that. So we see this gap of where people need that immediate assistance. Circles is to help them go through this program and learn how to become self-sufficient. So we do this by building intentional friendships and working with personal transformation and then systemic change. So our intentional friendships, you can go to the next slide. We have allies and it's encouraging volunteers in the community to help come and meet with these leaders who are leading the change in their lives. And they help them with giving them support. They help with helping budgeting. We have classes. We'll bring, we brought in like in St. George Dixie Tech to come and talk about certificates and programs that they have that are available. We bring in the extension to talk about finances and how they can better navigate those. So we're trying to help people see, can they become more, can they take on more work? Can they move from part-time to full-time? Can they earn certificates that are going to increase their pay rate? So those intentional friendships, like I said, they're, they're for volunteers. So we're looking for community members that will help come in and can be mentors in some ways, get to know and understand what the challenges our circle leaders are facing. And then also to maybe help them be aware of opportunities that exist in their community. A lot of people that are in poverty, they don't have the social capital to be able to rely on other people. They might not have family members they can rely on for help. Or other people that can say, hey, did you hear about this job? That might be a good fit for you. This might be a good stepping stone. All right, next slide. So we've talked about some of the things that they receive training on. It's just what poverty looks like. Personal finances, SMART goals, building those support networks, building strong communication skills and relationships. And what the rules of the workplace are and work relationships and what those should look like to be a professional. It's an 18-month-long cohort. So we ask for people to commit to 18 months. They do three months of training at the beginning. And then we have weekly dinners and meetings. And so with those meetings, we'll have those classes where people can come in. We might take them to the technical college and see that. We might work on other things like SMART goals or budgeting. And then once a quarter, we have a family fun night. One of the things we look at is that some people are in situational poverty, which means something happened that they were living paycheck to paycheck and all of a sudden they can't do that because they're out of work. And we have generational poverty. And that's where their parents were in poverty, the parents before that. So in order to combat that, we have, we have children programming. So we provide childcare, but it's not just babysitting. It's also teaching the children the same skills the parents are learning at the same time. So one of the big things, we haven't gotten to this in our St. George cohort yet, but one of the big things we look at is that systemic change. So are there things happening in our community that can be barriers for people? Some of the things that we know, our housing is hard. We don't have much affordable housing. Transportation is hard. Childcare is hard. So as we help these leaders become advocates for themselves, we can ask them and help them to, to help craft solutions to these problems. And then they can advocate and talk to our key leaders in our communities about how we can make those changes. So we have some ideas. This is called the cliff effect. When people, like they start progressing, they get a raise and they're making progress. But because they've gotten a dollar raise and they're just over that poverty limit, then they lose benefits and then they fall off the cliff. So they might make a dollar more an hour, but because they've lost benefits, they're actually $3 cheaper. You know, like, and so then they're in poverty with that. So how can we solve that for our communities? That's something we look into. Working with key leaders, business leaders, anybody in the, in the society and our communities that wants to work on that and help us solve those problems. All right, what's my next slide? So this is kind of the support teams. We have allies that would meet every Wednesday night. We also have community teams of people that will do the children's programming. We invite different organizations, religious groups and businesses to donate the meal that we have for that evening. And then we have teams with like, what are the jobs in education available in our community? We'd work with Department of Workforce Services for that or our colleges and universities. What are the services in our community? We'd bring on people that were at the health department or Five Counties. And then we have these other community teams, recruitment teams and big view teams. And all of this helps us build social capital. So those people are meeting other people that can help them with that change. So this is just one of our pitchers from Beijan in St. George. They provided a meal last year. And they all came and served the meal to our, our circles group. So this is an idea of what each of those different teams do. You can go to the next slide. And I've kind of explained that. So they can help make those linkages to help people get out of poverty. All right. And then we talked about the big view. And this also helps us because oftentimes I just gave you the numbers, but I didn't give you the stories behind those numbers. But it's very, I think it's very helpful for us as leaders in our community to know what that looks like, what those numbers looks like in people's lives and why it can be impressive. So this is a impact report. We collect data every six months to prove that what we're doing is actually working and if it isn't, to make changes. And so our cohort started last year, at the end of last year. And after three months, we saw a 5% increase in their pay. So that's, that's the progress after just three months. We just did another progress report and I'll be meeting with a data person to talk to them about that this month. So we'll see what it is at six months. But we can see that this is, like I said, it's a nationwide program. It's been proven effective. And these are some of the results for the nationwide. So you see significant increases, up to 74% after, at the end of the whole program with their income. And then you'll see more of them moving to full-time employment, getting certificates or two-year degrees, increasing their home ownership and increasing the reliable transportation that they have. So I think really what I want to encourage is you to do as you guys talk to other people or hear about it. If you want to let people know that now you know what the circles program is, you can encourage it. And we would love to have you come out and talk to us once we get the cohort started and, and meet with our circles leaders and see what the program has to offer.
So how often do you meet?
Every week.
Every week and we're out?
That's to be determined. We're working, we're working on our startup team. We haven't decided a date or a time yet or a location. So we're working with some different organizations to see what's available and to get a cohort started. We're looking at starting in January or February of 2026.
So Catherine, we, we have a committee that meets on intergenerational poverty. The sheriff is on it and Mike is on it and I'm on it. And boy, it seems like, like most of the things that you talked about, we literally talked about last week.
Oh, God.
And so I think, I think, have you been invited to come to one of those meetings?
I haven't. I'm meeting with Neil on Thursday to do a taping of the radio show.
Great.
Perfect. Neil's the man.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there's anything we can do to support that, I mean, you know, me personally, or I'm sure the commissioner would support us.
Yeah, I think Iron County is very ready for this program. It's, it's something you guys are already working on. So that's why we felt like this would go hand in hand with it. And I think it'll be a great collaboration.
One facility I can think of that might work good for you to meet in. We just, we added on to our senior center a couple of years ago and it's got a nice, big meeting room.
Okay.
Windows around. It's a nice environment. That's something you might talk to the director about.
I can do that.
You could, you know, that's something we let community, things like this use.
Okay.
So that's, that's an option. The library always has a, you know, room, rooms available, but.
Is this your cell number up there?
Yes.
Let me, I'm going to shoot you a text with the, our director of our senior center. Her name's Stephanie Rainey.
Okay.
I'll just, let me shoot you her contact information.
Okay, actually, that's my, that's my, that's my work number.
Oh, okay.
So I'll give you, I'll give you my card.
Okay, cool. Yeah, and then I'll hook you up with her. Cause yeah, that'd be a great.
That'd be a good location.
Yeah, it would be a good location.
It's a nice room.
Okay.
It's got windows all around. It's nice.
It's free.
Yeah, that's the right price for this program. Okay.
Want to add your, your team behind you real quick?
Yes. This is Darren Bushman. He's our new executive director and I'm not sure who's.
Roger Carter.
Roger Carter. I met Roger, but we're a big group and so.
So Catherine's doing a great job with this and the fact that.
Sir, could you step to the mic to be on? I don't know if you've ever been in a public meeting, but it's required to step to the mic.
You tell us your name.
This is my first public meeting ever. My name's Darren Bushman. So thank you. Appreciate that. Now Catherine's doing a great job with this program and, you know, it's new to us. There's, there's a lot of stuff to learn as she's going through that. She's new to us as well. But this program is working really well in Washington County. And so getting it started here, I think is critical. The one thing Catherine didn't tell you is this incredibly volunteer intensive, right? So we need your help. We, we don't have the connections to those volunteers that you guys have. So we need your help. I've, I've been talking with Commissioner Blake about this and kind of made some connections here for Catherine. But as you, as you look at this program and you think of people that would be willing and interested in helping, whether that's corporations or individuals, like Catherine said, we, we don't have the money in this program to fund all the meals and a lot of the, the stuff that they do. So, you know, we rely on the community, whether it's clergy or whether it's companies, corporations, whatever, to make this work. But, you know, I think this is a great program. And all you gotta do is go back and look at that slide. And you look at the number of people that have got into homeownership and the number of people that have increased their, their personal income or got reliable transportation. You know, it, the, the proof's in the data, teaching people how to do this. So anyways, we appreciate your support. Thank you. And Catherine's doing a great job. So thank you.
Appreciate you. And Roger, thank you for being here. And Catherine, thanks.
Thank you.
That was a great presentation. Appreciate it. Okay, we're at number four. Introduction of Five County Associated Government's Local Administrative Advisor Program. Roger?
Thank you commissioners for time today. I didn't realize I was going to share the agenda with my colleague Catherine. So that's, that's great. And then of course, I'm grateful to have Director Bushman here with us today. We're, we're glad to have him working with us down there at Five County. I noted that it was an introduction. I'm kind of, I hope that that wouldn't be the case because that would be a bit embarrassing. We've, we've, so the local administrator, I want to share with you just kind of some information, if you've heard about this with regards to the local administrative advisor program. Five County has actually been engaged not quite a year, or about a year and a half now in that program. That is a state funded, the state legislature set funds aside. And the purpose of the local administrative advisor program is to provide administrative support to communities throughout, primarily rural communities throughout our state that don't have any professional or full-time or anything like that administrative expertise. And so it's kind of a brainchild of Governor Cox. Although it's been being worked on for many, many years, the legislature saw the value of this. And so two years ago, they, they got it funded. And like I said, we've been just about a year and a half. The associations of government will manage these, these, they work in conjunction with the Utah League of Cities and Towns as well. A little bit about me, just to kind of let you know how I got pulled into this a little bit. So because this is kind of heavily administrative on the towns, I've served as a city manager for 20 years. Six, five years in Santaquin and 16 years in the city of Washington. And left that and more recently, just finished up eight and a half years of federal oversight over the towns of Hildale, Utah and Colorado City, Arizona. Not only with their federal injunction, but also helping them restructure their governments out there. I also serve as a professor of public administration here at Southern Utah University and I'll touch on that in just a second. So it's been a lot of fun. We have 21 communities in the Five County area that qualify. To qualify, you have to be less than 10,000 in population. You cannot have any full-time manager. Okay. We do have some that of course have clerks, but, and, and then you qualify. So I think we may not have the most number of small towns that meet this criteria, but I think when you add in the mileage between those towns, we, we kind of lead the state with that as well. So we go as far as Boulder, Big Water. Probably up here, Paragona and Minersville. And of course, Washington County has, has a number of those as well. And we provide, I provide whatever it is that they need help with. Okay. The goal is we, I will not be the town manager. We don't want to work that. Nobody knows their towns best than those, those staff and elected officials. But it is to be more than anything a value-added program to them, to help them. In many of these small communities, they don't even have one full-time employee. They have a part-time clerk. And they have the clerk because they're statutorily required. Okay. But yet these clerks and others have the same responsibilities as the recorders and others with elections and with postings and with minutes and with budgets and all those things. And many of those don't even have the experience to, to kind of get through that. And so it's been a lot of fun and enjoyable from my point to be able to help them. And my time is kind of split, both in providing hopefully proactive stuff for them. We provided things like we helped them with, well, let me talk briefly really quick about your communities. I realized and the director pointed this out, I gave you Minersville, okay, from Beaver on your list here, on your form I filled out. Believe me, I could have probably given you worse towns out of Beaver. But anyway, Minersville is one we work with. But in your, in your county, it's primary, it's Canaraville and Paragona. And we do quite a bit of work with Paragona. We do some work with Canaraville. Again, this is very self-determined. They get to determine kind of what role they would like us to play. But we've worked with both communities, all three communities actually. But with Paragona, we've done things like we're working on their annexation policy plans to help them with that. We've helped them update land use codes. We've, we're working on a transportation master plan, updating their transportation master plan. We've helped them, probably one of the big items that we worked on throughout the state and we worked on it with many, many communities, including Parrow in here, is the COVID funding. And the COVID funding was ready to be pulled back if the towns hadn't complied. We had almost nine million of money in the state of Utah jeopardized in COVID funds. And one of the primary response, and most, a lot of that was in the rural communities. And so one of our responsibilities was to, to work through what they needed to do to finalize their COVID paperwork. So we became somewhat COVID funding experts, which I would just simply say is a part of my life. I'll never get back and it's a miserable part of my life. But we were able to keep and, and those towns were not in jeopardy. Also, we have a lot of state requirements. We help the communities with their .gov transitions for cybersecurity. And we're currently working all of them with data privacy. But what's important is we don't want to also be the, the compliance officer. I've mentioned this to the state. Our, my goal is not to be the compliance officer for the state. Yes, it's important that we help them come into compliance with state regulations. Unfortunately, our legislature at times puts out lots of legislation that is kind of a one-size-fits-all. Even though it doesn't need to be that way, it becomes that. So we have to work with our very small communities on the same thing that they would work with in Orem and Provo and Salt Lake and other things. But primarily my responsibility is to work with those communities on whatever they need. And if I don't know how to help them, I certainly probably know somebody who can help them through the processes. So. So anything from budgets, to plans, to ordinances, we do it all, including a lot of calls an hour before planning commission meetings and city council meetings to ask how we might proceed doing this, or that, or other things. And so, uh, that's kind of how the program works. It does not cost the communities. This is an appropriation from the legislature, so that's a real benefit, uh, to them as well. I've listed some things on the back, additional things that we've done. And then I would just conclude also by saying, also because of my role with, uh, Southern Utah University, we've had this great opportunity in your county to include the Southern Utah University Masters of Public Administration Program, and this has been a great program. And I don't know if you're aware, but our Masters of Public Administration Program here at the university does emphasize rural government. Uh, that's our emphasis. So they have, we have great professionals, student professionals. We have a lot of non-traditional students in that program, so they are able, so we've been able to write plans for communities. We've been able to help them, uh, implement. We've done engagements within the communities. And all that has been not only to provide experience to these students that eventually will move into these, uh, responsibilities, but provide these services that these towns always thought, oh, I wish I could do that, but just have never had time to do it. So my goal here is, uh, Commission, is to, to kind of at least get here before you once a year and report on how things are going within your county and your couple of communities. Uh, they are doing well, those communities, and we're, we're doing a lot of things, uh, with those two communities, but we're enjoying doing it, and they're, they're really communities to be proud of, so. Um, any questions that you have, and then if you don't, when we get done with that, Director would like to speak for a second time in his first public meeting, um, for just a second. But is there any questions that I can answer as far as the Local Administrative Advisor Program?
No questions, just thank you for yours, for what you're doing for these smaller entities in our, in our county. Do you work with Newcastle? Do you work with these other?
We do, because they're not in the Five County area. I have counterparts up in the Six County and other areas that do this as well. There are seven of us around the state, I think. Um, and in Five County, I'm it. Six County has three or four that they are able to, to split up with, um, but I'm it, and so, um, uh, yeah. But Newcastle, I think, is one that they do work with, and, and some of those other areas that are outside of. And again, they have to be incorporated.
Newcastle's in Iron County.
Yeah, they have to be incorporated, so if they're county.
If they're not just a town, they, they have to be, okay.
Yeah, now, the other thing too, I will mention too, is that really counties can qualify. Now, we haven't taken, I haven't worked with any of the communities that are unincorporated because of the, that requirement, the incorporation. But I can tell you, if a county wanted to, had said, hey, could you go talk to Newcastle or whoever? Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. Like I said, we've even worked with the towns like Parowan and other things. Um, primarily, our funding is for those incorporated, less than ten thousand, no, no, no full-time, um, administrator. So, yeah, thank you.
That's a great resource.
I travel through a lot of things, places, and, and sometimes I don't know when I'm going from one county to another without a vibe.
Your experience lends itself well to this position, so that's.
Well, they're great communities, and it really is the backbone of our state or these rural communities, and they're really struggling, so. Thank you, and I'll, I'll, I'll be, always feel free, you've got my card to call, and, uh, I'll make sure and be regular here to keep you updated on how things are going, and if it's okay, I'll have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren Bushman, again. Um, we're really lucky, out of all of the organizations in the state, to have an actual city administrator in this role, because we're the only one in the state that has that. And Roger's experience is, is just fantastic, and his connection with the academia side has really brought some resources too, because he's leveraged some of these MPA students to, to help do work. Um, and, and to the last point, Roger was talking about helping communities that aren't incorporated. Um, I went with Roger, uh, to Cedar Mountain, as the whole conversation has been transpiring about them potentially becoming incorporated. And we sat through that, uh, Pitchforks meeting, um, with him, and as he, you know, helped to educate on, on what the steps are, what the process is, you know, how a community might incorporate. Um, so Roger does a little bit of everything. He has a, a mailer list with all of the clerks, and the conversations that come through that he's routinely answering, um, just amazes me. I think the one thing that he, he tried to say, probably didn't say it as well as, as, as I would like, he's really building capacity in these communities, um, and, and he's doing a great job at that, right? And, um, he doesn't want to replace him. He doesn't want to be their city administrator. He wants to build capacity, so, uh, it's a great program. One thing we need your help with is, you all know the best lobbyists on the Hill are the three of you sitting here. Um, this program last year got in the middle of a political tussle. Um, Utah League and City of Towns is the one who administers this funding. And as a, a retribution and payback, the legislature decided to hit that program for about a half a million bucks, um, which consequently hit us. Um, the funding for this actually funds three positions at Five County. Um, so we have our CDBG, CIB planner, that does all of that work, trains and educates, and helps all the communities with CIB, CDBG. Um, and then we also have our community planner that does all the general plans, all of that, uh, type of work. That's Kevin Smedley. Um, and then Roger, um, and that comes to us in one lump sum. Anyways, we're gonna need your help this year on the Hill to get the funding restored, or even added to. You know, it's like he was saying, um, Six County has three folks in this position, and we have one. Um, part of it's the way they've structured their program, um, is, is different. Uh, they don't have any county, or city administrator experience, and so they've taken their planners and given them this role. Um, so everybody has all three of those roles I described, but, um, anyways, any help you can give us on the Hill would be greatly.
You know, if anybody has started any legislation on this, do we need to?
Um, there is, there is work underway, and in our next Five County, uh, meeting, we're gonna ask, um, all the Commissioners to sign onto a letter, um, in support of this, and, you know, we're trying to get an RFA, uh, pushed through to, to restore that funding, so, yeah.
That'd be good. You know, ma-, that sounds like a good idea with the steering committee, and then also maybe send us some bullet points on what we can do on the Hill.
We can get you some talking points.
That'd be helpful.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's go to number five, discussion and possible approval of local consent for a single event permit. Oktoberfest Festival to be held on October seventeenth and eighteenth, two thousand twenty-eight. Is that a typo?
Yes.
Two thousand twenty-five, at the Iron Springs Resort. I didn't know if we were going like three years out.
Way ahead of the curve, yeah.
Planning way ahead. Uh, Lauren Denhalter, is Lauren there?
I'm just really prepared.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, we're just trying to do Oktoberfest again this year. Did it last year. It was great. Um, just the basics that an Oktoberfest has. Do you want to talk about that? This is Amber Lee, my assistant manager.
Hello. Um, yeah, so we're just trying to get a single event permit approved, and they consent to serve beer and wine. At our Oktoberfest, um, Fall Festival, we have, we're gonna have live entertainment, we're gonna have comedy shows, we're gonna have Kids' Corner, um, uh, annual wiener dog race. It's really fun.
More entries this year than we've had.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be fun. Um, and, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
The sheriff's niece used to be kind of a professional wiener dog racer?
Wait, really?
I forgot all about that until I, I actually attended one of those events back in her childhood. It's pretty creepy. I didn't know it was a thing, but.
It's, it is. They're pretty, they get pretty competitive.
I, I don't have any questions.
Oh, we're good. I think I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve a single event permit for Oktoberfest Festival to be held October seventeenth and eighteenth at the Iron Springs Resort.
Second.
Been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're good to go.
Thank you so much.
Well, I can sign it, and then the clerk will want a copy, I believe, right?
So, yeah, if you, if you could just ask Commissioner Cousins to sign it, and then go down to the clerk's office, and they'll get a copy from you. Is there a counter?
How many wiener dogs do you have signed up?
Yeah.
Wow.
Get them conditioned.
This just sounds like great family fun.
Is there testing for PEDs on the wiener dogs?
Let them have a copy of it downstairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, discussion and possible approval of an outdoor, a Utah Outdoor Recreation OHV Grant Contract for OHV Trail Maintenance. Mike?
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, this is just, uh, a grant that comes open twice a year, and I usually apply for it to help maintain the, uh, ATV or OHV gra-, uh, trail systems. Uh, we've been able to purchase quite a bit of equipment, trailers, and, uh, so forth to, to do this. And this is more of a maintenance-type grant. What we're proposing in this grant is to purchase a six-way blade for the Miniak, or the Skidsteer that we have, and, uh, put funds together to hire a, uh, part-time or seasonal or contractor to run the operational equipment, uh, to maintain the trails. We have a Skidsteer, a, a Traildozer, and a Miniak that we use. And then there's maintenance on the equipment, so that's part of it, and, uh, program management and whatnot. The amount of the grant is thirty-three thousand, five fifty, and it, uh, lasts for about two years, a little over two years, and.
It renews for two years, is it?
It, it, it'll close in two thou-, uh, December of two thousand seven, twenty-seven. So it'll run from now until two thousand twenty-seven, and then it'll close, and, but in the meantime, uh, we have opportunities to apply for more grants from this program. This is, this program's been a, a really great, uh, program for, uh, the OHV Trail Recreation, and has also helps out some of the other county departments that we have, and, and, uh, uh, like, uh, last year, we was able to do the, uh, state line trail system that had totally washed out, and we got help from the road department to go in there with some FEMA funds that we had, and, and part of this, another grant, that we, uh, got a lot of those fixed and taken care of. So it, it does help a lot in the other counties. But anyway, Commissioner, I believe you got the copy of this and, and, uh, signed, and, and it's been being held until we execute it.
Did I, I signed that one, right?
Yeah.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Utah Outdoor Recreation OHV Contract for OHV Trail Maintenance, uh, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, five fifty.
Second that motion.
Moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Mike.
Hey, thank you.
Appreciate it. Eight, discussion and possible approval of Letter of Support for Parowan City's Application for United States Economic Development Administration.
Seven.
Seven. Did I miss seven? Oh, I'm sorry. Just seven. I wrote the amount on the wrong place, and it threw me off. So, uh, discussion and possible approval of extending an agreement with Dixie National Forest to finish the concrete construction at the snowmobile parking area for one year. Mike?
Okay, that, last year, this is a, a project that's taken us about twenty years to complete. Uh, finally got the Forest Service to where they, uh, had their plans and had a little bit of funding they could do, and, and, uh, they came to us and asked us if we could put into, for a grant with the Utah Outdoor Recreation, uh, Office, which we did. And, and together, we, uh, put together, uh, or constructed the parking lots, the winter parking lots up at, uh, on Cedar Mountain, right on the Kane County, Iron County line. And it's, uh, one of them is a parking lot for the non-motorized, which is the snowshoe, this cross-country ski on the, on the west side of the highway. And then the other one is a motorized, which is the snowmobiles and whatever else. Anyway, uh, we've got that all completed, uh, a big, uh, thanks to Bruce and his crew for doing a lot of the work on the highway to get the parking lots ready, then, and got them asphalted last summer. Uh, this, we, this summer, we put in a, a vaulted toilet, uh, on one of the parking lots, and, and, uh, now we're waiting for, uh, the toilet to settle in order to pour an apron and a walkway to the parking area. So, uh, our, we had a grant from, or an agreement with the Forest Service where they would give us sixty-one thousand if we would, uh, take care of the contracts and whatever else. We've done everything except for the concrete work on the par-, on the pathway. And our agreement expired, uh, the end of this month, so I was able to get them to extend it a year so we could get that settled and, and get the concrete poured next summer. And that's what this does. It's just an extension of that agreement.
I noticed last year they had that all, it seemed like it was all complete, but the snow didn't get plowed into it, so it didn't look like.
No, that, and, and I, I'm not sure what the status of that is. The Forest Service trying to work something out to have somebody do it, that UDOT won't.
They won't, they're off and plow that?
Nope, they won't do it. So I think they've got a contractor in Duck Creek area that, that can come up there and do it.
Okay.
So.
Very good. Okay. Make a motion.
Make a motion to appro-, for approval of extending an agreement with Dixie National Forest to finish the concrete construction of the snowmobile parking area for one year.
Second.
Is it moved to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Number eight, discussion and possible approval of a letter of support for Parowan City's Application for United States Economic Development Administration Funding to Aid in Construct, constructing a road and utility infrastructure near the Parowan City Airport.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, items eight and nine are both, uh, from Parowan City. I had a good conversation with, uh, Dan Jessen over some barbecue last week. And, uh, the first one is a letter of support for, um, funding, um, both of these, I believe. Jeannie, did you bring those pa-, those, uh, letters up? Do you remember seeing them? Okay. Would you? Yeah. So, um, basically, the, all the stars have kind of aligned for Parowan City. They are, um, able to, um, get these bits of funding, um, from different sources, um, and it's going to, um, really help their airport facility out. Uh, between the public, um, economic, um, development administration funding and the Goio, uh, grant from the Utah Governor's Office, um, they're gonna be able to, uh, kind of build the road and, um, those, that bit of infrastructure at their airport, uh, without a lot of cost to the city. Uh, there's a tenant that's gonna chip in, and, uh, with these other sources of funding, it's gonna be, um, a very positive thing for Parowan City.
Have you put together the letter yet?
Uh, yeah, I have it printed out, and, and that's, Jeannie's running, grabbing it, so. So there are, there are, uh, letters for each of those, yeah.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for item number eight.
Um, for approval of the Letter of Support for Parowan City's Application for United States Economic Development Administration Funding to Aid in Constructing a Road and Utility Infrastructure Near the Parowan City Airport.
Second that motion.
Been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number nine, discussion and possible approval of Letter of Support for Parowan City's Application for Utah Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. Goio Rural County Opportunity Grant Funding to Aid in Constructing a Road and Utility Infrastructure Near the Parowan City Airport.
Same thing?
Yep, right? Just basically the same.
Yeah, same idea, different, uh, different grant.
entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion for approval of Letter of Support for Parowan City's Application for Utah Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. Goio Rural County Opportunity Grant Funding to Aid in Constructing a Road and Utility Infrastructure Near the Parowan City Airport.
Second.
Been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's, that's awesome, because that's the worst road in Parowan. So when you could go out to the airport, like, I mean, it's awful. It rattles your fillings out. It's, I mean, you might throw your back out on a couple of those.
To go home, too.
Hurts your feelings or rattles your feelings?
Rattles your fillings in your teeth. It hurts my back every time. So the problem is, is that the animal shelter, like if I am in my cop job at Parowan, and I have to take a dog to the shelter, I have to drive that road.
Be on that.
Like, I avoid that road like the plague, but sometimes I have to go to the animal shelter.
It's one of those roads that would have been better as a dirt road for twenty years, because.
Yeah.
And this was done over barbecue. Library was involved, me. Library was involved, me.
Yeah, who bought? Who paid?
We went Dutch, man. There was no. Good recovery.
I tried to trick you, but.
Suddenly I'm very uncomfortable.
All right, let's see. Jennifer, you're up.
Good morning. All right, in the Sheriff's Office Corrections, Hadley Hickman was selected for the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time Corrections One Deputy Position effective 10/12 of 2025. And he will be joining us from another location, so after FDO process, he'll be eligible to receive the sign-on bonus, which is great. Sheriff's Office Patrol Fernando Gomez has elected to move from a full-time benefited status Corrections Deputy One to a part-time, non-benefited status Patrol Bailiff effective 9/14/2025 and his pay will remain unchanged on that one. In the Justice Court, Lori Neighbors has completed all tasks and requirements to receive a promotion from a full-time judicial assistant to a full-time senior judicial assistant beginning 9/22 of 2025. And then in the Fair, Brad Benson will be moving from a part-time status to a seasonal status effective 9/14/2025 with his current pay structure to remain unchanged as well.
What's the difference between, what's the difference?
He'll be going, instead of working for the entirety of the year, he'll be just working a six-month snapshot during the year, which will allow him to obtain more hours during that timeframe.
Which is where, which is more critical.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Sounds like a good plan. Okay. We get to that?
I will move for approval of personal items one through four as outlined by Jennifer.
Second that motion.
Moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, let's see, we got any county boards? Think we're good?
I think we're good, minor, we're good.
No closed session today? We're good?
No, I did want to just bring up one item with you all. I've given you a printout of this proposed land exchange Commissioner Robinson and Dan and Bruce have been working on. We have a pit that we use for gravel on the east side of Parowan and then they own our site for the Parowan landfill and it seems to be a sensible exchange of land, but under the law, we have to make notice. And so would any of you have objection if we start moving toward, that is me coordinating with Parowan City on, you know, getting the public notice for our disposal of property and their disposal of property? Do you have any objection with us moving that process forward?
No.
No.
I just want to make sure that Carson's involved in that process to make sure that we're.
The values?
The values are comparable.
Okay. And I, Dan and I did mention, talk about that a little and so we definitely don't want to exclude that part of the discussion. The acreage is exactly the same, I think is what you're getting at. And then are the, what would the values be? Would there need to be any kind of remuneration on either the county or the city's part? So.
Appreciate that. Anything else? If not, chair declares this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, so you might already know this, the Utah.
Awesome.